Ladies and gentlemen, this is six o'clock on the 28th of January 2025. I'd ask that you please silence any electronic devices you have. We are live on YouTube and we call the Upson County Board of Commissioners Meeting to Order and we'll start with invocation.
Would you write ahead, Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for all of your amazing blessings and God, we thank you for this opportunity to meet again. And Lord, we pray that you be in the midst of this meeting. Lord, we ask that you touch each person that is here representing and bless their families, God. And God, we just ask that you continue to bless our community and keep us and keep us safe. And Lord, we just thank you, ask for forgiveness of all of our sins and wrongdoings in Jesus' name for it. Thank you.
Turn and face the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Okay, the first item is approval of the agenda and I'm going to make a motion and the motion is going to be to change the agenda by item number eight D, presentation discussion with Rusty Blackstock about Brightmark. Do I have a second? I want to remove that from the agenda. Make a motion and remove it.
You're making the motion.
I'm making the motion.
I'll second.
Okay, we'll have discussion real quick. So, reason I made that motion is because this body does not have the decision-making authority on anything to do with Brightmark. All right, so I understand the community, different people in the community have different positions on Brightmark. Last week, we had Ms. Healy spoke in public comment. So, there's going to be public hearings through the process. There is a process to go through that does not include this board, all right? So, I don't believe it is appropriate to have a debate, have a discussion with this board. That said, all members of the public are entitled to make public comment at this meeting. What happened here is Mr. Blackstock correctly presented to the clerk a request to appear before the board, all right? The only people who can approve putting something on the agenda is myself or two commissioners. That part didn't happen, all right? So, he was put on the agenda without, as a procedural error, right? But that is the ordinance, all right? So, I don't believe it is appropriate to have deliberations with the board. However, I'm more than open to allowing you to use the public comments section to go over your presentation.
Agreed.
Okay. Any other discussion? All right, hold for vote.
Chairman Bru.
Yes.
Commissioner Ellington.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Commissioner Beetz.
Yes.
Commissioner Watson.
Yes.
Okay. Next order of business is public hearing. We'll have a public hearing before we have public comments. The public hearing is on an ordinance to amend the code of ordinance of Upson County, Georgia to repeal section 2-26, 2-27, and 2-28 and replace them with new sections 2-26, 2-27, and 2-28 regarding meetings, agendas, and parliamentary procedure to provide servability to repeal conflicting ordinances and for other purposes. And what we just talked about is in, actually in this part of the ordinance. So, I have a motion to open the public hearing.
So move.
Second.
Vote. All in favor? So, we're going to open the public hearing on the ordinance for the conduct of the county commissioners' meetings, right? Discussion. I can start it off. We had our first working session, the 8th of January, I believe it was, first Wednesday in January, it wasn't a holiday. And I brought up a couple of things, right? We have counties in this state that are much larger, much more complex than ours that manage to meet once a month and have county commissioners meeting and vote on things. As you look at those counties, they often have multiple meetings where they're actually working on things. So, what I proposed was that we have one meeting that we're required at the end of the month, the 4th Tuesday, right? That still leaves a second Tuesday available if we need a meeting. We'll have our working session the first Wednesday and then the second Tuesday is available if we need another working session or if we need a voting meeting. We also changed some things in there that had to do with voting, right? I normally, from what I witnessed, the chairperson always voted last, which gives me some flexibility, or I can go with the crowd. So, we changed the voting methodology where it's rotating. So, each week, there'll be a different person who has the last vote and that eliminates, well, it minimizes the ability to take the easy way out, if you will. I said that because I ran on transparency and I want people to know what I really, how I really vote on things. So, that was that. What else was there that was pertinent?
So, Mr. Chairman, in section, the largest change is really just codifying some basic parliamentary procedures where before it was simply mentioned that we would abide by the most current version of Roberts Rules of Order. We took a summary or an outline of those general procedures and actually put them into the code section. Among those which we discussed at the work sessions is that the board would have a motion and a second before any discussion was made. So, that and other things are codified. It's basically simply a sort of a cheat sheet or a Roberts Rule summary and we just plugged it straight into the ordinance so that it's something that the board can easily refer to or a citizen can go on, look at our code section and know how our meetings are corrected without having to reference another document.
The other thing that we clarified in there was majority vote. You have to have a quorum present, right? So, we could have a board meeting with three members. It has to be a majority of the board to pass something. So, if we had a board meeting with only three members, it would have to be a unanimous vote for something to take place. The other thing that we incorporated is public comments, right? Just like we're going to have tonight, there's typically a sign-up sheet and depending on what the issues are, sometimes there's, like tonight, no one's going to sign, no one's signed up. So, it's just going to be Rusty tonight or Mr. Blackston tonight, but sometimes there's lots of people signed up, right? And the things they sign up to speak about aren't necessarily what we're here to do business about. So, what we proposed was we'll have two public comment sections for the meeting, right? So, when you come in, there'll be two public comment section that you can sign up for. The agenda is published ahead of time. If you want to speak about the business of the night, you sign up for agenda items. If you want to speak about something else, you sign up for other. So, in the beginning of the meeting, you'll have opportunity to speak on these items that we're going to be deliberating on tonight, right? There's a 20-minute limit, five minutes per person, so that's a maximum of four speakers. The same applies to the other, right? 20-minute limit, five persons, or four, yeah, four persons, five minutes. So, that's really 40 minutes of possible public comment during the meeting, right? The other thing that we put in there was public comments for public hearing, which is what we're in right now, public hearing. In this, we say we have 10 minutes for someone to present a proposal. The most common thing I've seen with public hearings has been a zoning issue, right? And so, typically, the planning director, Doug, would come in and give a little presentation. Whoever the property owner would say what they wanted to do, right? And then we open the floor, right? So, we just put some stipulations. You have 10 minutes to present what it is you want to do. The opposition has 20 minutes to comment and it's limited to five minutes each, so that's four speakers, but you can yield your time. So, if you just want to say up and say, "I just want you to know, I'm totally against this," you use 30 seconds. You got your say, but other people will have an opportunity. So, it's a 20-minute clock, five minutes per speaker max, but when you're done, I yield the remaining of my time, that stays on the clock. Does that make sense? One other thing I want to cover that we put in there, when you speak, your name, the agenda item that you're addressing, if it's an agenda item, and then whether or not you're a resident of Upson County. We do not need your address and some people are not comfortable with giving their address in a public forum, especially on YouTube. Could not find any statutory requirement to do that. So, to me, I just want to know, are you someone trying to sell something in Upson County? Are you, are you here in Upson County living? So, that's really the gist of what we worked out. So, it's available for anyone who wants to read it, but the floor is open if we have anyone who wants to make a comment about it, correct? Even though, even if they signed up, but.
Nobody signed up.
Nobody signed up.
Do I have to ask support?
Go ahead.
Let's just say you have a big item. I've just used Brightmark. It's going to take up more than the 40 minutes. You've got multiple people.
So, typically on public hearings, there's more than one public hearing?
Well, I'm just saying if it was within the board meeting, you got a total of 40 minutes, right? Or 20 minutes.
Five minutes.
I'm just saying, I'm just using Brightmark as the, just say they're going to tear that courthouse down.
Okay. Give me Brightmark, it doesn't matter what.
But I mean, is it, you got more people that want to speak and the 20 minutes is exhausted? Is that it?
For that, for that public hearing, yes.
So, there's only four people that can speak?
No, not during a public hearing. You have 20 minutes of speaking time. So, if you want to stand up and say, "I just want to say, I don't agree with this aspect or that aspect," and you take one minute, there's still 19 minutes left, right? If someone could stand up, they could talk for five minutes, they could talk for two minutes. So, as many people that want to talk, but the point is that people generally are getting off work, coming here and we want to stay focused on what we're here to do, right? Specifically with the agenda comments up front. And during public hearings, we typically have multiple public hearings, right? And typically, someone's presenting a case, someone's countering a case, then they should get an opportunity to rebut whoever that person is, right? If I'm, if I'm a landowner and I want to do this and my five neighbors are against it, right, and they say X, Y, and Z, we should come back and that person have opportunity to say, "Well, I'm doing this or that to mitigate that." Does that make sense? All right, so we have no one for.
So, this is a public hearing?
It is.
That list that's blank right now is for those who'd want to speak, is that correct?
Yes.
Nobody signed it yet?
No one signed up.
Sign it. Yes, I am a citizen of Upson County.
Yeah, you can, normally we would pick it up if it had names on it.
So, do you need to sign this if during the public comment section you want to speak? Do you need to sign this ahead of time?
Yes.
Sign it now?
Yeah, so if you wanted to speak during a public hearing, you would, you would sign up before the meeting. These are always available before the meeting starts.
There's one for public hearing, one for public comments. This specific public hearing is just for the ordinance change?
Yes, ma'am.
Does it have a show of hands?
I'm sorry?
Could there be a show of hands, how many, or four, or against?
No. Okay, so, we can collect that up. I mean, did they sign up for public hearing comments?
Yes.
Okay, so we're in the public hearing. Jerry Marston?
Perfect.
Correct? Okay.
Is this?
Stand on where the X is over there?
This is about the thing that we're talking about tonight, is that correct?
Now, the public hearing is on this ordinance.
This particular ordinance?
Yes.
Okay. I'm looking forward to the Brightmark. I guess I.
Need to be public comments.
You need to sign up for public comment.
Okay.
So.
Yeah, I also want to sign up public comment.
Yeah. We could just, just scratch out, and that is for the public hearing.
Okay. Okay, so have no one signed up for the public hearing, right?
Correct.
Have a motion to close the public hearing?
No.
I've got one question.
I got a comment. Now, what about we've already published for the year, our board meetings?
That's administrative thing that we voted on and we'll vote on the ordinance that we're right.
And then we're going to have to, because if you want to change it to 4th Tuesday, 4th Tuesday, you know, that's usually a Christmas week in December. So, we're going to have to talk about that.
So, we still have the second Tuesday available.
Right. Long as we don't miss any meetings for these people out here.
Mr. Chairman, I would just like to state this, I mean.
Mr. Ellington?
I think this has come up in the past and I'm not against it, but I just, I just caution this board, you know, if we limit the public's ability to talk to us, it just, that concerns me a little bit. And I understand this is, so we can, we can focus on our work and all, and I will support this, but if I get kicked back from my constituents saying that, you know, that they don't have an opportunity to speak to their representative publicly, other than speaking to me on the phone, if they want to address us all, then, you know, I'm, I'm just saying, I'm reserving that, that opinion to come back and state my facts to the board.
And, and this, this would get reviewed every year anyway, and we'll see throughout the year if we have more than eight speakers or whatever at any particular meeting or how public hearings go, because we're going to have public hearings. I'll just say, if you look at other counties, which is what we did, most other counties limit public comment to three minutes, right? And so, we do five minutes here and we just want to get to the business at hand, anyway.
Mr. Chairman, before you vote.
We're not going to vote on this tonight.
Okay, I guess the way, when we're going to have another public hearing, always give us a chance to look at all the changes.
Okay.
At the next meeting.
Next meeting will be a separate.
And where will you hold your work sessions?
Plan to hold them here.
Airport.
Plan to hold them here. It could be somewhere else, but it'll be on YouTube.
Oh, we have YouTube.
All right. Any other discussion? I get a motion to close it.
So move. Second.
All in favor of closing the public hearing? All right. We go back to the agenda. All right, and so now we're to public comment, so Mr. Rusty Blackston.
Mr. Chairman, my name's Rusty Blackston. I'm an Upson County resident. I assume the petition was placed into your package.
We have it.
I'd like to present you with a list of names that have signed the petition. I assume some of the material that I gave the clerk was informational to you. It's not just this company, but it is the industry as a whole. And I hope it was useful to you. And I'm not here tonight just to target, use the word no against Brightmark. I'm here tonight about the industry itself. And a lot of people, as I've been talking, that live within a half mile of this building site didn't even know it was, and even, you know, in the works. But tonight, there's over 600 signatures on this, on this paper. Some of you'll say, I know it's not Upson County residents. That's somebody signed it from Belgium, the country. But there are people here in this audience that signed it and I begin to ask questions. It depends on your internet service, where you will be located. If you're on Windstream, you may, it may show up, Ms. Douglas was in Rincon, Georgia, wherever that's handled. Another person would be in Nashville, Georgia, San Francisco, if you're on Highline, you'll be out of Alabama, Texas, or whatever. So, if it says something other than Thomaston, Georgia, that could be the problem, but I'll give you 10% of the signature to trash it. Well, that being said, I'd like to read you this petition for the public to hear. And the issue is the Brightmark Circulatory Center and Thomaston LLC. Whereas the board of commissioners of Upson County are charged with the health and welfare of the county, and whereas the Thomaston Upson Industrial Development Authority has issued an industrial development revenue bond to be held by the authority for the purpose of a plastic recycling and conversion center in the amount of $879 million to purchase land, construct a facility, and to purchase equipment, et cetera, needed to, in turn, lease back to Brightmark Circulatory Center of Thomaston, a Delaware-based LLC. Whereas other cities and counties in Georgia have rejected this company due to financial and environmental problems and not being able to meet requirements set forth in their agreement. Whereas the citizens of Upson County are concerned about the technology and economic feasibility of chemical recycling, as it is uncertain and unproven to the fact that major investors like Shell Oil Company have stopped investing in this practice. Whereas we believe the quality of life, our environment, safety, and integrity of our county far outweighs the proposed economic impact rejected by this project. Whereas this type of industry has and have caused hazardous, environmentally dangerous events in their local areas and areas along transportation routes. These events have endangered the public, emergency personnel, and employees. Our local fire services do not have the equipment, personnel, or trained to combat such an event. Whereas in such an event, consider the effects of other local industries, the regional airport, the agricultural industry, and the effect on real estate values. Whereas many general attorneys in the U.S. have already brought lawsuits against these type of facilities and investors for false information and deceptive practices to the public. An example is the state of California just filed a $20 billion lawsuit against ExxonMobil. And whereas undersigned citizens of Upson County hereby waft the Upson County Board of Commissioners to oppose the Brightmark project for locating in Upson County, whereas we hereby request a public declaration to be made at the next regular board meeting of commissioners by each and individual commissioner as a support or opposition to this project. And Mr. Chairman, I have talked with some of the commissioners here and they tell me they don't know enough about it to make a decision. You have a little, you have a little stuff that I gave you, you can do your own homework. And you say you have no control of it. Sir, I beg to differ with you. There's options that you can, I'll be glad to discuss them with you at your next work meeting if you will put me on the agenda to allow, if you're concerned with it, but the public, at least 500-plus people and most of the people here tonight are in opposition to this. And it's your job as a board to protect the citizens of Upson County, their property, and their environment. And we're just, I mean, if you want, some of you have already made a comment to me for all kinds. If you want to voice your opinion tonight, the people want to know where their representatives are on this project. If you want to say yes, you oppose it tonight, or you support it, that's fine. If not, we'll wait for an answer next month. And if you would like to, I will discuss these options with you at a later time, or we can discuss a name, which you'd like to do. But I know it's just the easy way to say, "We have nothing to do with this." But yes, sir, you have more authority than I.
All right. Thank you. Public comment? Okay. Yeah, so now Jerry Marston?
Yeah, passed.
You're passed, okay. And then Tracy Knapp? Do you want to speak?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. I don't want to take up too much time because I know probably a lot of y'all have a lot to say.
Tracy, you have to address the board.
Yeah, so I know, thank you so much for this.
Where you from?
The Rock, Georgia. We are, we own a small family farm in The Rock, and my husband and I are farmers and we saved our money to buy that land in cash. And if anybody here is farmed, you know how hard that is. And we save up for every little bit that we add to that land in irrigation and compost and what we can do to build a house. And then to hear that just right down the road, on our same road on Barnesville Highway, this project is going to be happening, that's, it's going to ruin everything. Everything we've done in our life has been for our future, for our child's future, for the future of this entire planet. We're regenerative farmers. And now, do we even put the money into building that well? How safe is that water that we currently catch off of our roof to irrigate our crops at the heat? This is devastating. This changes everything for us and for those of us who are doing everything they can to build a future and to build a home and who chose Upson County to be the place to have their family's future and our livelihood from our farm, I, you know, I just want to make sure all of y'all, you know, see us and understand in any way that you do have a voice in it that's more powerful than ours, that you speak for us and know that we completely oppose Brightmark. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Okay, that concludes public comment. Next order of business is consent agenda. Do we want to go over the proclamation?
I don't know, no one here for it.
Okay. Do I have a motion to?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I have a second. Is there any discussion?
Chairman Bru?
Yes.
Commissioner Ellington?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Beetz?
Yes.
Commissioner Watson?
Yes.
Next item is new business. Discussion and consideration of the purchase of equipment for Emergency Management Agency, EMA.
So, Mr. Chairman, this is a simple request from our emergency management director to purchase a specific brand and/or type of extrication equipment. He can go into the details if he needed, but ours is outdated and in need of replacement. He recommended to finance staff that we go with a single-source vendor because it has interoperability with all the other similar tools that other local agencies use. So, did I, did I say that correctly?
Yes, sir.
And it also exceeds our purchase authority as staff. So, so it's a sole-source purchase in excess of $25,000. Our recommendation to the board is approval and we're here to answer any questions if you have.
What do you do with the old?
The commissioners, what do we do with the old stuff?
We could, we could start to buy some, maybe tack auction or go deals if anybody wants them. We got the set of tools that we have when Upson Regional Medical Centers ambulances
We could, we could start to buy some, maybe tack auction or go deals, if anybody wants them. We got the set of tools that we have when Upson Regional Medical Centers ambulance service went out of business. They've been on our truck that long, long time. We were told by the service tech, they will not cut a vehicle newer than 2015.
How often is it used?
Not very often, two to three times a year. So with those being in the county, if any of the rescue personnel are in town, they'll grab that truck and take it where the call may be. The last call I can think of was a fatality accident that they responded to, and the tools were needed to cut out a couple of victims. Not very often, but when we need them, there's, there's no, no other tool we can use.
Is it possible to donate the, what we have now to one of the volunteer fire departments?
Yes, any of them on it, yes, sir.
I mean, I know you said it had limitations.
It has limitations, but there is some, some things that it can do. Yes, sir, that is, that is something we could do. The other thing, these new tools are battery-powered. We don't have to worry about the ethanol gas. We've had trouble with that before repairing our pump, so that'll eliminate that issue.
Any other discussion?
No. Just tell us where the money's coming from. But you need to tell everybody.
So the, the total cost is $32,011. That will come from us, Sploss Level One balance, currently at $703,000. Seven hundred thirty-three.
Motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
I have a motion to approve by, second, so.
Chairman Brew?
Yes.
Commissioner Ellington?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Bee?
Yes.
Commissioner Watson?
Yes.
All right. Next item. Okay, that was it. Comments?
So, Mr. Chairman, I actually have four items that I have on your agenda. I, I don't want to belabor them unless you have questions. So, very briefly, Planning Director and I, we joined the first stakeholder meeting for the Atlanta to Savannah Rail Project. Our region was identified as potentially having input on that route. So we joined that meeting for the first time. So we will have some say-so on that, with that project moving forward. If you look at the timeline and the summary that I gave you, you know, they're not even looking at deciding a route until about 2028 or 2029. But we will begin to have some input on that process, so I wanted to get that on the, on the Commissioners' radar. I put a project detail summary in your agenda. If you have questions, let me know. Second, I put some updated project briefs on our two GDOT bridge projects, Jeff Davis over Potato Creek and Hannah's Mill over Potato Creek. So, and I've got some updated timelines in those summaries as well. And then lastly, similar to our discussion that we had with Congressman Jack Staff today, I put a NACO brief. So one of the National Association of Counties, so one of the subcommittees that I serve on, were working on certain aspects of the newly proposed tax reform language, and then what parts of that are of interest to counties. And specifically, the Chairman and I had the opportunity to tell congressional staff today that, among other things, we were concerned about maintaining or enhancing the state and local tax exemption for, for your federal income tax, so you're able to write off what you pay in property tax, the state income tax, and maintaining the tax-exempt status of municipal bonds. It's different versions of tax legislation have been potentially proposing doing away with that to bring in additional revenue for cuts elsewhere. So we highlighted our Judicial Center project as one project that we would not have been able to accomplish without that exemption. So, you know, when we sell bonds at a rate less than 3%, you know, if we had to go on the open taxable market, we're going to be close to double that, so. And we also did submit that project as a highlight for National Association of Counties' overall database, which they share with all of congressional staff, of highlighted projects from our community that have benefited from that part of the legislation. So it's a lot to digest. If you have any specific questions about any of those four items, please let me know. It's my intent to try to provide these in a more formal written form as we go forward. If you have any other questions or comments.
I got a question, yes. Just, I did not see the one on the St. Hannah's Mill. I mean, but I did not see Jeff Davis for the post that is here and that is listed. Can I get one?
Open that one up.
Timeline on that. Because that's going to impact a great number of people. At least it appears that way when I travel that road every day. Like I said, I seen the rail.
It's the one with the longer P, I never. That's it. So you're at about less than 10% complete? So they're saying completion and final inspection in April of '26.
So I'm guessing foundation work and that, I guess what I'm looking for is when they go, when they go block it? When is it going to shut down?
They have a bridge demolition for next month.
Right, that's what I'm saying, is it going, so is it a specific day of next month?
No, they don't have a specific, because I promise, on my phone, it's going to be raining off the hood.
Yeah, we probably need some messaging on that.
Yeah, we really need to get out in front of that.
And we'll post, we'll post the detour as well on our own social media.
It's not back and forth, though, right?
No, it's not.
It will be. It already is. I mean, I just, I want to make sure that we get that information out there, because we have a lot of people that travel that road. We have a very large church out there, and just, you know, I know nobody wants to wake up that day, travel that road, and hit a roadblock, and have to try to figure out how to get around.
I will post this, so I've got, I've got a highlighted link. I can post that on our social media, so people can go and look at it.
It might not be a bad idea, radio, newspaper. We need to, we need to do everything we can to get that out there, so the public will know. And, and I'll have good information to give.
We'll be glad to be able to.
And hopefully they can complete it ahead.
That's it for me.
Mr. Watson?
I have one question. Could you give us an update related to the ballfield work at the wreck department? Is everything on schedule?
So we, we lost, and I'm going to, if you don't mind, I'm going to look to my finance officer. We actually were trying to get an update from our team today. We did lose at least a week to weather. So I think we're about 10 days in construction delays, so nothing major, but we're getting closer and closer into encroachment, into playing time. So, may I address the staff just for a second? Is there any other thing you want to add to that? I don't have a full report for them.
Well, just that after a recent large rain, after they had finished the fields, we noticed standing mortar on the fields, about 45 minutes after the rain. So they've been contacted, and they've got to come back. And we have Dixon issues. And so they weren't draining properly. Or, oh.
Is, is there a backup plan if it does start creeping into the start of spring?
Yes, but it's not a desirable one. Yeah, so we've been utilizing some of the city fields, which is great, but as, they've not, you know, they've been maintained as passive park space, so they don't make for great play.
Hopefully they make it back up.
So, the folks have been troopers, like, working, working through the renovation, unable to practice on it.
Yeah, I've gotten a few complaints about not being able to access the fields, but that's all I have.
Mr. Dix?
Yes, sir. Seven things here. You know, you ask yourself what makes a great board, you know, to disagree and agree makes a wonderful board. We talked about the public comments, public hearing, and just looking at the expressions, you know, that's a lot to comment digest. You know, we all took our oath to do what was in the best interest of the people that we represent. We all said we're going to work on transparency, we're going to listen to what our constituents had to say. And I want to stick to that promise. So I would ask this board, let's move slowly in making these changes, and just get feedback from the public as to what our next move should be. Get them, get them the opportunity to have a voice also. My other thing would be, Mr. Ten, I want to thank you so much for inviting us to the Department head in meeting this morning. That was a great event. I learned a lot of things about the staff that I don't guess a lot of people would know, but they had a lot of concerns. And, and, you know, we need to make sure that we address those concerns also. I want to thank everybody that played a part last week with the severe weather that we had. I wish there's a way that we could actually communicate a little bit better, you know? Is there something on a kind of website that we can post on an event like that? Can an IT person work from home to make those type things possible? You know, just keep the public in the loop of what's going on.
Mr. Johnson?
Appreciate everybody showing up. Your voice counts, and we don't mind listening to your voice as we work through some of these new ordinance changes and everything. Let us know what you think. You know, we're not scared to listen. And I appreciate everybody showing up.
A couple of things, and one thing that's kind of sprung on me, based on Mr. Dix's comments, but our alert system, is it inappropriate to use it when we have roads closed, major?
Roads closed, no, it's not a problem at all. I think it's a great idea, you know, we could even announce the bridge closure. I think we have to be careful with what we do put out. We don't want people to get frustrated and unsubscribe. Subscription is very low. Less than 3,000 people have signed up for Upson Alerts. So, you know, we make pushes for that all the time. Martha Ann is still a deputy director with us. She does a Facebook page. She puts it out there all the time. It's still on the county website, it's on the city website, but we're just not getting people signed up. So we've set up tables at events and handed out flyers.
He needs to explain that. Thank the 3,000 people showed up, signed up out of 30-some-thousand people.
Approximately 30,000, yes.
Y'all know what the alert system is?
No.
Yeah, and I won't break David Rule, I suppose, but he just got to call me down. But can I get a, somebody show me a hand, if you don't mind, Ray, if you signed up for emergency alerts, where you get texts and phone calls, and severe weather, those events? All right, so that, that's less than half the people in the room. And there may be a reason you're not signed up for them. Maybe you don't want to know that tornado's coming. But please, if you don't know, what can we do to help get that information out there? Because that's, that's the best way to mass communicate. Yeah, I'm the first one to tell you at 3:00 a.m. in the morning. You don't really want to hear it, but it's designed to save the lives and communicate. And, you know, so I, I think the good outweighs the bad of it. So, not my, I'm not an expert at that, but I mean, it, it sounds really reasonable. It sounds like we need to somehow get that information out. I know we change systems, and some people may be on the, the old system, so whatever. I feel like this board can do to help you, I feel like we need to be doing that to get that information out to the public.
I would like everyone to understand, if they signed up for the old system, it was very, very unreliable. People would fall off the list, people from New York would show up on the list. We had no reason why, they couldn't tell us why that was the reason for the change. And because our database was so corrupt, we chose not to import it into our new system. We started from scratch. So if you got alerts from Everbridge, that's a system that you signed up for several years ago, it's imperative you go and sign up for the new system.
And we, this one, can you describe how you signed up?
Yes, sir. There's a, the easiest way to do is go to upsoncountyga.org. There's a link on that homepage. It's a, it's a picture of the house that was on Highway 74 during the tornado. Click on that, it takes you to Civic Ready, and you can do all your settings in there. You're always welcome to look up the EMA office phone number on the county website as well. Leave me a voicemail, I will call you back, and I will put your information in while I'm on the phone with you. So, I'm glad to help any way we can. We've done that several times for people. And the nice thing about it, if you do sign up today and you need to make changes a year from now, you don't have to remember a password. You go back to the Civic Ready site, put in your phone number, it sends you a code, and you're in your account.
And this is just not for, like you said, it's for emergency alerts, it's for emergencies, not necessarily just for bad weather. It can be, you know, road closings.
Bull water advisories.
Bull water advisories, and that's important if you're on a water system. Many, many things, you know? And hey, all you got to do is hit ignore, if you just really don't want to be bothered by it, but at least you, you, you're being contacted. Because you're never really concerned till you need to be.
Can you walk me through it?
The only way I know to get there is upsoncountyga.org. I know it's at the bottom, where the news scrolls across at the bottom, there's like five icons down there. Below that, there it is, right there. There might be some of the problem we got.
Right, that's right there.
Right there. Go, go to one more.
One at the bottom of the page. To your right, to your right.
In the middle. Yeah, right there. That will take you to the website.
So please, encourage family, friends to sign up for this, and, and, so you can kind of be in the know as far as emergency alerts go, and as you can. The other thing that I had is, to the group that's here tonight, thank y'all for coming out. I, I fully realize that y'all have concerns. I don't think anybody on this board, including myself, wants to dismiss your concerns. We all have concerns about different things. But I'm going to also use this opportunity to talk about this. We were in here, you know, just a few short months ago, we were talking about zoning and things coming, and, you know, Thomaston's going to grow. Thomaston is going to grow. And if we don't implement things and put things in place to manage that growth, then we're going, I mean, it's, it's almost just like telling a farmer, here's some wood, go out there and build me a house. You don't know what it's going to look like. If we don't, if we're not the architects of what's coming, we're not going to like the results. And I think this is an example of, that you're seeing right here, that you, that you don't like this. So as a community, if we don't decide who we want to be, then we're going to take what we get. Because as your representative, I'm, I'm up here one week going, no, don't put the restriction on us, because you're going to hurt me, and you're going to do this. Then the next week, oh, don't do that, because, I mean, and then I'm, I don't know which way to go. I'm in the middle of the highway, and I got one foot on one side of the yellow line and one foot on the other. I don't know which way to go. I'm confused. So it, it's not good to go with the wind. Politically, it's okay, but eventually, it's going to catch up with you, too. So we got to have input in our community, not just about Brightmark, about how we want our community to look going forward. And I know most of you are here for that tonight, but I do want you to understand, we got other issues, too, that we need to address. It's, it's all encompassed into this, and we got to decide who we want to be as a community and start building it today. Because if we wait, we're going to wake up and go, what happened?
Mr. Chairman, that's all I got to say. Keith, you got anything?
I don't, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Okay, hey, ladies and gentlemen, just a few things. First, thank you for coming tonight. It's, it's great to see. It's, it's great to see this room filled with concerned citizens. Believe me, I'm glad to see everyone here tonight and we do want to hear from you. We're trying to figure out how to do it efficiently and to get work done efficiently. We need to, we need to make some moves. We need to get some things going, right? So talking about that, we just tried to get to the emergency alert. You know, one of the things I'm really interested in is, is engagement and how we communicate and how we message to the public what, what is coming up, what are we seeing, what do we need your help with, right? The other thing that is really important to me is community involvement. We have a number of board positions open, right? We have a planning commission seat open, we have, help me out, just, the IDA is open, library is open, Macintosh Trails is open, Region 4 EMS rep is open. We have a lot of board positions open. We need people from our community to volunteer to be on those boards and be a voice for the communities. You know, we by virtue of our position are sometimes on certain boards, but we can't be on every board and we need folks to help us out and then come back to us and tell us what's going on and what we need to be looking at. So I just encourage you, look at the website, look at the application, you can print it off, you can email it to Jessica, her email's right there on the application. We do need to fill some of these positions so we can move forward a little quicker in making decisions. I just want to close by saying I do really appreciate everyone coming out here tonight. I do understand people's concerns, you know, and I don't want you to think at all that we're dismissive of your concerns. I'm very aware of concerns. I, I know a lot of people who have concerns and I, and I listen to each and every one of them and I appreciate you sharing with me, whether you share here in the public comment or whether you share with me personally, I appreciate that. Is there any, anything else? I get a motion to...
I'll say.
On paper?
Yep.
Juror?
I want to think about some air conditioning.
Oh!
Hey, it's right there in my hands.
I'm freezing. Get the freezing.
How are you? Good?
Hi.
How are you? Is your breath?
Hey.